Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of Health Special Meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. My name is Kai Mentor, Chair, Thurston County Board of Health. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards, President. Commissioner, and I believe Vice Chair John Hutchings will be joining us late. He has a conflicting obligation, and he will be joining us. County Manager Mira Chavez is on screen. We have County Health Officer Damianna Abdal Malik, Director of Public Health and Social Services, Shelley Slaughter, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, Kateri Wimsit of Public Health and Social Services, Lydia Hodgkinson, the Clerk of the Board, and Jennifer Simmons, also in Public Health and Social Services. Okay, I want to make sure I got that right. I believe that's the roundup. And to start, we're going to, we're calling the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda.
Asking, I didn't hear that.
If you can put a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, yes, sir. I would make a motion to approve today's agenda, sir.
I second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? The motion carries, agenda is approved. And next is approval of meeting minutes from August 11th.
Yep.
And work session notes from August 4th and August 11th.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that, all in one motion. I would approve the meeting minutes from August 11th, 2020, and the work session notes from August 4th, 2020, and August 11th, 2020.
Sorry, Commissioner, need to move to approve, if I may? So you can actually vote?
I, I move to approve that. What, did I not say that? I'm sorry.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion on that?
No, sir.
No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and the meeting minutes and work session notes are hereby approved. Moving us to number two on today's agenda, which is a proclamation related to Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And Jennifer Simmons, I believe, is here to kind of give us a an orientation to this proclamation and what's underneath it.
Thank you. I'm here to thank the Commissioners on behalf of Thurston Youth Alive for recognizing September as Suicide Awareness Month. Suicide is a tragedy born out of hopelessness and despair. And all of us have been touched by the sorrow of suicide, be it a beloved family member, a cherished friend, or even a favorite musician, sports hero, or some other person we admire. The void that is left behind is profound. We know that over the past few years, death by suicide has been on the rise, both in Thurston County and across the nation. And sadly, the challenges brought forth by COVID has fueled that problem. As many Americans are facing unprecedented social isolation and economic uncertainty. Today and every day, we invite you to join us in the fight against suicide. And while there isn't a magical cure for the disease of despair, there is something you can do. Human connection is protected. If you're worried about someone, please be brave and say so. The solution to the problem resides within us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Commissioner Edwards, any questions or comments related to Ms. Simmons' presentation?
No, I look forward to reading this proclamation, but I, I would be remiss, being a veteran's advocate and a veteran myself, that I can't pass on mentioning that this is a big issue for veterans that have served their country. So, for all the reasons stated today, I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
Absolutely. I know that I've learned on many occasions that rates among veterans of suicide are higher than the overall population, and, and that rate is too high to begin with. And we just learned from our corner, not the first time we've heard it, but we just heard it again at the noon hour elected officials meeting, that rates are up in Thurston County, in Thurston County for 2020. We've had about the number of suicides to date that we would have had for an entire year. And there's still several months, several difficult months left in front of us. So, this is timely. And usually, we would have, obviously, a room full of folks. And given that we're, have a more limited number of folks on this Zoom, I guess I would, before we read the proclamation, I just open it up to Dr. Abdal Malik, or Shelley, or Kateri. No pressure, but if you wanted to pipe in with any other additional information, this would be a good time. Raise your hand if you do. I'm seeing nothing. Okay, well then, Commissioner Edwards, we are ready.
Okay. Thurston County Proclamation, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and suicide prevention is a priority in our community. And whereas suicide is the eighth leading cause of death for Thurston County residents, and the leading cause of death among county youth aged 10 to 17. Sadly, suicide in Thurston County is on the rise in 2020 due to disaster-related distress created by the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, thinking about suicide occurs regardless of age, gender, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, income level, religion, profession, or background. And whereas, there is no single cause for suicide, but there are warning signs that we can learn more about. And whereas, talking about suicide does not increase the risk for suicide, and everyone can have a conversation with someone they are worried or concerned about. And whereas, demonstrating care and compassion about suicide is something each and every one of us can do. And many suicides can be prevented by talking to those in crisis, expressing concern, and helping those suffering to connect with professionals for treatment. If a suicide attempt seems imminent, dial or text 911. And whereas, local groups like Thurston Youth Alive and the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, and many others are working to increase awareness of what can be done to prevent suicide and provide resources in our communities. And whereas, Thurston County is able to offer a community suicide prevention training called Question, Persuade, Refer. That's QPR. It is for anyone who wants to be able to help a friend, family member, neighbor, coworker. Please contact Thurston County Public Health and Social Services at 360-490-6161 for more information. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Health hereby proclaims September Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Thurston County, and encourages all residents to envision a world dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through prevention, education, and advocacy. Adopted the 16th day of September 2020 by your Board of Health.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well done. And I know that we will have this, I've signed an original. It will go appropriately, and hopefully, we'll get this out to the community through our public information staff so that we can get, make the community aware of what the Board of Health has done today. Thank you, Jennifer, for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, item three on today's agenda is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Health. This is and this is an item just for the public's benefit. This is essentially a, a normal Board of Health meeting that was rescheduled from last week because we canceled the Board of Health and Board of County Commissioners meetings due to the holiday of Labor Day. So, we're going through our regular items that you'd see on a, on a normal Board of Health agenda, even though this is a special agenda, special meeting. I'll look to the county managers, or anyone present in the boardroom that would like to give testimony to the Board of Health.
I don't have anybody present on the boardroom. Let me check the conference call. Is anybody joining us via conference call who would like to have public testimony before the Board of Health this afternoon? No, sir.
Okay, then we move on to item number four, which is a department item. This is a business item. Resolution, appointing an alternate local health officer. I'm going to ask Director of Public Health and Social Services, Shelley Slaughter, to present this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Mentor, and members of the Board. I'm Shelley Slaughter, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. And in this capacity, you're appointed Administrator of the Board of Health. And for this item, each year, the Board of Health appoints approved alternate health officers to act in the event that your appointed health officer is either absent or incapacitated and unable to serve in the role for a period of time. This may be due to illness, to vacation, or other forms of leave to ensure that Thurston County has a health officer able to serve. So, your resolution that you have in effect now allows for any health officer in the state of Washington that is duly qualified as an acting health officer may serve as an alternate. And the resolution describes in which, in which order and how that health officer acting appointment is initiated. In this particular case, so we do have that coverage now. If Dr. Abdal Malik needed to be absent, we could ask an acting health officer in the state of Washington to serve Thurston County. In this particular case, the, the proposed action before you is to appoint our former health officer, Dr. Diana Yu, as an alternate health officer who may fill in for Dr. Abdal Malik if needed. Since Dr. Yu is currently retired, but meets all the qualifications as spelled out in RCW 70.05051 through .055, Dr. Yu is a qualified, currently licensed medical doctor with a degree in Masters of Science in Public Health. She meets all the qualifications of a health officer and is willing and able to perform that duty if called upon. So this action today is for the Board to approve Dr. Diana Yu to serve as an alternate health officer if needed in the event that Dr. Abdal Malik needs to take a leave of absence for whatever reason, or is suddenly incapacitated. Any questions on that?
Commissioner Edwards?
No. No, sir.
Shelley, my question is, you say that currently we were allowed to appoint a qualified person. What is the necessity to actually identify someone specific? If we could already, we could already call on Dr. Yu. So what, what do we gain, or why are we, why are we making this specific designation?
Currently, you could not call on Dr. Diana Yu because she is not an acting health officer for another local health jurisdiction. She is retired. The qualifications, but she has local knowledge and expertise, especially as recently serving us in terms of our COVID-19 response. So I think it would be very beneficial and a very generous offer for Dr. Yu to be able to be called upon and serve again as an alternate health officer for Thurston County should be needed. There would be a benefit to doing so that the Board may wish to exercise rather than having a acting health officer who is also currently dealing with some of the same challenges that we are under this emergency from another jurisdiction.
You mentioned that a couple weeks ago, and I, now I remember. So that makes perfect sense. Okay, do we have a motion then?
Yes, sir. And, and prior to making that motion, I just meant, might mention that there's always a benefit for your situation. And being, I'm a little older than the rest of you. I've had that honor of working with Dr. Yu in many capacities over many years. And she certainly knows Thurston County as well as the surrounding communities, the other counties around us. So, Dr. A, I think you're getting a real bonus here because you could not find anybody more qualified for the fit to help you along on, on your tough job, if you will. So, yes, I'd like to make a motion. I would move to approve Resolution H072020, Appointing Dr. Diana Yu to Act as an Alternate Local Health Officer for Thurston County.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
None here, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. We've got Dr. A and Dr. Yu. It's got a nice ring to it.
Very good. Yep.
All right. Thank you. So, we are going to move to now Department Item Five. Set a public hearing on a smoking and vaping in public places or places of employment ordinance. And we have our, our team on this, Kateri Wimsit. I see Chris Hawkins here. Kateri, I'm going to call on you because you're listed here on the agenda as presenting this item for, for consideration today.
Great. One second here, I'll get my screen ready to go. So I'm Kateri Wimsit, I'm from Public Health and Social Services. You seeing my slides up there?
Yes, we are.
Great. I work with the Community Wellness Division and an Education and Prevention Team. And I'm here today to talk with you about vaping. In my presentation today, I'll be giving you some background information about this public health issue, discussing the local policy option for the Board, and asking you to set a public hearing. So to begin with, let's talk a little about vapor products. There are many different types of products on the market shown here on the slide. But all of these devices basically work in the same way. They operate by heating up a liquid solution to a very high temperature, so it produces an aerosol that is inhaled. And the solutions that are, yes.
Your slides aren't advancing. I think it might be because you need to go into slideshow before doing the screen share, maybe.
Okay, let me try that again. Now, let me try to share the screen. How's that?
There we go.
You got it.
Yes.
Good. Yay, great. Super, thank you. The solutions that are used, that are heated up, are called e-liquids. And these usually contain nicotine, flavoring, and some type of humectant, like a propylene glycol. Using an e-cigarette is often referred to as vaping. However, the devices actually create an aerosol, not a vapor, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. But vapor products can also be used as a delivery system for marijuana and other drugs besides nicotine. So what are the public health concerns about vaping in public places? There's really three concerns that I'm going to be talking about today. One of those has to do that vaping exposes people nearby to this aerosol that contains an unknown mixture of harmfully, harmful and potentially harmful chemicals. And we know that children, pregnant women, and individuals with compromised lungs are especially at risk. Another concern is that allowing vaping where smoking is prohibited implies that it's safe. And we believe this is contributing to a problem of rapidly increasing use of e-cigarettes and vapor products among teens. And then finally, other drugs are often used in vapor products, including marijuana. And that's illegal to do so in public places, and that complicates enforcement. So to talk a little bit more about these, let's first talk about the aerosol. Oftentimes, this was marketed, for many years, as just water vapor. But that is incorrect. Our research has shown that when you heat up those, the liquid, what happens is that it creates an aerosol that contains tiny particles from both the liquid and the device. And these particles can go deep into our lungs and lead to negative effects on health. And some of those things that they found from research that is in the aerosol includes nicotine, volatile organic compounds, including known carcinogens like formaldehyde, heavy metals like nickel and tin and lead, and then ultrafine particles, which are these really, really small particles that go deep into your lung. And this is especially a concern for vulnerable populations, again, like children, pregnant, or breastfeeding women, and anyone who has asthma or any other type of lung disease. A little bit about the concerns around youth vaping. So, we know from our local data shown here on the screen that youth are using vapes at very high rates. And this is mirrored across the nation. On the screen in front of you is some information from the Healthy Youth Survey. The light blue bar shows our 2016 numbers from that survey. And the dark blue bar is the 2018 Youth Survey results. And what you see there is basically an increase in every single grade in the past two years. And that was mirrored as well. So, so much so that in February of 2019, the U.S. Surgeon General actually declared a youth vaping epidemic. This is really a concern because of many reasons that I've talked about previously, but also about nicotine use. We know nicotine is a substance that is highly addictive and has known health effects. And one of the major ones of these has to do with the developing brain. Because the slide there is trying to show your brain and all those connections. So your brain is developing until you're into your mid-20s. And so when you introduce an addictive substance like nicotine into that brain development, it changes that brain development. And it really increases your risk for addiction, not only to nicotine, but later to cigarettes and other drugs as well. It also can lead to impacting parts of your brain that control attention, learning, mood, and impulse control. So, this is part of that reason why it's so important. So if you look at the different types of law at the state level that governs smoking and vaping in public places, it's kind of a different types of patchwork. In Washington State, our no smoking law, also known as the smoking in public places, or the SIP law, was passed by voter initiative in 2005. And what that says is smoking is prohibited in indoor public places, anywhere in and around schools, and in places of employment. In 2016, they passed the state vapor law. And what that governs is a very small area for restricting vaping in a very few public places. At schools and childcare, indoor and outdoor, outdoor playgrounds, and then in school buses and elevators. And then finally, one more law that governs a little bit of youth around public place use is the marijuana law that basically prohibits use in general public and indoor public places and outdoor public places per definition. So that's kind of the overview of the laws that currently exist. And what we're asking the Board to consider today is a look at something that they're able to take action on. The U.S. Surgeon General recommends adopting vaping in public places regulations as one strategy that's effective in not only reducing youth use and protecting our young people, but also in helping protect employees and citizens who visit public spaces from exposure to these products. We know that preventing youth initiation is critical, and that having local policies that reinforce the norm of not using tobacco and vaping are so important for prevention. In Washington State, currently, or excuse me, 12 counties have already acted to pass these types of regulations. And those are here on the slide in front of you in purple. It's about 75% of the state population. So what we have in front of you then today is a request for consideration of an ordinance. And what that ordinance would do is it prohibits smoking and vaping in indoor public places, places of employment, including outdoor spaces where employees are expected to pass as part of their work, and additionally, certain outdoor public places where children congregate, like playgrounds, childcare facilities, public and private school, K through 12 areas. It would also apply the same 25-foot rule for presumptive reasonable distance from doors and other air intakes for indoor spaces for vaping, as is true for smoking. And it would also require signage about the rule at public places and places of employment. It employs a standard approach to enforcement, specifies what constitutes a civil infraction and what the penalties are. A rebuttal process for reducing the 25-foot rule is also included in the ordinance. The ordinance is proposed to establish an effective date of January 1st, 2021, with the first six months after this being educational about the policy change, before full information occurs after that. And that, what this effort really does is it helps to implement not only part of the county's strategic plan initiative, which was improving health outcomes for all, but also the short-term strategy of preventing tobacco and vaping use in Thurston County by focusing on youth and areas which the county and the Board of Health can impact. Public health would continue stakeholder work and provide information through a variety of communication channels that we already use about this draft ordinance, and if enacted during that first educational phase as well. So today, what we're asking is that you will consider setting a public hearing date. We also want to let the Board know that currently, a CIPA review is needed on this. So we're currently working through that process. That does require its own timeframe. And any decision by the Board cannot be made until that CIPA process is concluded. However, we are asking you to set the date for the public hearing in October, and then to set a decision date after the CIPA has concluded. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for the Commissioner?
I do have a, something I'd mentioned, if I could. Is that?
Please.
Is, we're on now?
Yeah.
I know the county manager's going to make mention of a amendment here in just a second. But I would just like to say that, as a general rule, I am not very excited about creating regulations that are not likely to be enforced, or are almost unenforceable, or a certain segment of our society is not likely to follow. But in, in the case of this vaping, where Dr. A's maybe never heard me say this or not before, but I've, you've heard me preach this for the last four years, that kids are 30% of our population, but they're 100% of our future. And I just think, whatever we can do in regard to our young people to help them end up as a success, whatever that is. I guess I'm, I'm willing to make exceptions. I know we're not making that regulation right now. We're just moving towards the public hearing process. And don't take this as if I don't support your efforts. I really do. It just bugs me when we're in a situation that we end up doing something, and, and we all know with pretty certainty that it's, it's a step in the right direction, but it certainly, we're oftentimes not able to do much about certain things. And it's frustrating to me to know that we jeopardize our kids on a regular basis. So, I'd just defer to the county manager. I know he's got something in mind for a So I'd just defer to the county manager. I know he's got something in mind for an amendment.
When the board is ready, first of all, I apologize. I should have cut this when you approved the agenda. But on this proposed motion for your consideration doesn't have the time. So I will propose to add the time of 5:00 in the afternoon.
Katery, I have a question. So indoor public places, I'm looking at your slide that kind of summarizes the restrictions that are proposed, with the exception of tastings in licensed retail outlets per state law. Just trying to understand what that means. Would that be like the vaping lounges that I've seen? Some of them have gone out of business, but I know at one point there were a handful of them in Thurston County. Is that what would be a licensed retail outlet that would be under this exception, or is it something else?
A licensed retail outlet is actually anyone who sells products and has a license from the state. There's about 137 retailer licenses in Thurston County right now for vapor products. But most of those, the vast majority of those are places like grocery stores, gas stations, retail outlets like that. A few are dedicated vapor product stores. And as far as lounges, from my research, there's probably less than two or three lounges in the county at this point. A couple of them have closed. So the state vapor law does allow tastings. That's not the same as allowing continuous vaping, like a lounge atmosphere. So there's a change in that. We're talking about a very small number of places. So they wouldn't be able to, they would be allowed to taste and sample per the state law. They have to check ID to do that.
Are you saying the state law already prohibits them from doing more than just the tastings? Or, I just want to, if our action is shutting down businesses, then I'm not saying I wouldn't do that, but I want to know that. I don't want to be caught surprised.
Sure. No, I think that's a good question. I think most of the places that, the one place that I know that has a lounge sells products as well. So while its name has lounge in the name, it sells, it holds a liquor license as well, and it sells products. And the vast majority of stores will only sell products. So similar to the tobacco stores that sell tobacco products, they're not allowed to smoke in the stores. What we're saying is that you're allowed to sample and taste per the state law, which is different than in smoking stores, stores that only sell traditional tobacco products. I don't know if that helps at all.
Well, I see that distinction, but I'm just trying to make sure I understand what state law is now versus what we're going to be adding on to that through our county ordinance. Right now, no county ordinance. State law would allow continuous vaping in a vaping lounge, or not? Or do you know?
I have to look that up, to be honest. I do know that it is allowed per state law, to allow tastings. And how long that goes, what the, I really would need to check in with the Liquor and Cannabis Board as they are kind of the purveyors of that piece of law.
I mean, everybody takes their own kind of routes through the county. And the two that I knew of, one on the west side and one downtown,
Right.
The two that, I think they're both gone. But I didn't want to presume that there were no others in Lacey or other places that I haven't seen. And, you know.
Many stores will have, sorry, many stores will have special events. Watch, come watch the Seahawk game, that kind of thing. But as far as I know, there's only two that are lounges, in the sense of lounge.
Okay. And then there was a language change that I had requested, and I see it's in there, so I appreciate that. So I guess I don't have any other questions. Are we, it sounds like we're maybe ready to have a motion to set a public hearing.
We're getting close. If staff doesn't have anything else, I think, I don't know, am I going to make that?
With the 5:00 in the motion, please.
On our item number five, I would like to make a motion to amend this issue to be changed from, in the second line down, from X, X, X PM to 5:00 PM, to build in there. And I'd make that motion to amend that motion.
Okay, well, I'll second that then. All in favor, say aye.
Okay.
Aye?
Aye. Okay, so now we're legal. We're back on course.
We've got the amended language now. We just need the motion.
Yep.
Okay. I would move to set a public hearing on October 13, 2020, at 5:00 PM, or as soon as the matter may be heard at the Thurston County Courthouse, Room 280 of Building 1, to receive public comment on the proposed Thurston County Smoking and Vaping in Public Places and Places of Employment ordinance.
Second, excuse me, been moved and seconded? Any further discussion on this item?
No, sir.
Motion. Okay, me either. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That motion carries, and we have a public hearing set for October 13. Commissioner Hutchings, vice chair, has joined us, just recapping for him. We just set a public hearing on the Smoking and Vaping in Public Places and Places of Employment ordinance.
Aye.
All right. And that brings us to item six, which is Board of Health members related health-related activities. I'll start with Commissioner Edwards.
Well, I do. I'm going to have, I'm going to have one. Wear your mask, stay healthy, let's keep the numbers down so we can sooner, rather than later, get on with whatever is coming to be our new normal life. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchings?
Well, two, and one of them I mentioned, I think, yesterday morning. And that was, my wife and I are in line to get our flu shots. And they don't have the upper one for our special people who are in a protective class until next week. And so we're anxiously awaiting getting those flu shots, an extra protection of, a layer of protection. Also, in the last six weeks, I've taken up smoking. And that's a trigger smoker. So meats, chickens, fish, whatever, I'm just loving it. My wife and I are loving smoking foods. And it just smells like a campfire. It smells so good. But with all the natural smoke that's in the air now, I've, my wife thinks, is that a good idea? You know, on one hand, I'm thinking, I don't care. It tastes good. But on the other hand, I've kind of limited it as well. But that's only smoking I've taken up. I can't wait for Thursday or Friday when the air is going to get better, and we can see a blue sky again. Other than that, I have nothing, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I was getting ready to censure you for the taking up smoking. The main activity I wanted to report on was the opioid task force meeting, which I attended. And this has come up in a couple of meetings, but not in this context, which is the fact that opioid use, which our numbers were looking better and better, have now gone up, and opioid deaths are up. And that's, I think I saw something in the newspaper that that's statewide as well as locally. So Dr. Hayes nodding, so I think I'm on track there. And so this is something, it ties into the whole mental health and, you know, the fatigue of dealing with the pandemic and, you know, the changes and difficulties with economy and employment and school. And it's all tied together. And so folks that were already successfully struggling with substance use disorder are now facing new challenges in that, which is not easy to begin with. So it's just something to keep our eyes on as a health issue in the county. And the opioid task force was talking about, you know, potential steps that we could take to try to address that. So, good meeting as always. And I tend to, you know, regularly tend to WASAC information regarding the health pandemic. But I'm assuming as we segue into our next couple of items, which is our Health Officers Report and our Directors Report, that we will get probably a little bit of information about COVID-19. And who knows, maybe something else. So I'm going to move to item seven, which is the Health Officers Report. Dr. Dimiana Abdemal. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Metzer and Board of Health. I wanted to, so I'll start by talking a little bit about the general transmission of COVID in our county. So that has been downtrending. Today, our positive test rate, so the number of, the percentage of the tests that we do that turn out to be positive for COVID-19 is now 1.8%, which is less than the 2% that it had been in the past. So that's a good sign that we're testing a lot of folks. And so that's definitely positive. And then our case counts have been moderate. There might be a little bit of a delay due to the smoke keeping folks inside. But, so we might see a little bump. That's just kind of a testing lag. But overall, our overall trend is definitely downwards. I wanted to speak a little bit about wildfires, just that we've all been managing with the smoke. We're still in the very unhealthy range with our air quality score of 228 as of last check. So I wanted to remind everyone within our county to stay updated and current on their forecasted air quality. Avoid outdoor physical activity. Stay indoors where possible. Keep doors and windows closed, and avoid things that would reduce your indoor air quality, like burning candles, or frying food, or vacuuming. It's important when we go outside to wear respirators. Your average mask offers minimal protection. And by that, I mean minor exposure to smoke is unavoidable. And we don't actually, it's very hard to acquire things like N95s. The respirator recommendation has more to do with folks that are working outside for long periods of time. And for those folks, that would be, it would be important to make sure that they protect their, that they protect their lungs as well. We have, for ourselves here at the Public Health and Social Services Department, we've stopped our outdoor activities in response to this until our air quality improves, which we're anticipating will be tomorrow at the end of the day. We are continuing to, so as far as our department, we're continuing to monitor our lakes. We have two current lakes with advisories, Lake Lawrence and Lake Patterson. And we're waiting for, we're waiting for toxin levels to come down. As a department, we've had four sessions for childhood flu vaccines for folks who are going to be having, who are just doing their beginning of the school year vaccinations. And this was in congruence with CIMAR, which is one of our community partners. We are also in the planning stages of creating a plan for the dispensing of a potential COVID vaccine once that is safe and effective according to our state DOH and governor's guidance as well in that regard. So we're moving forward. We're looking ahead. And we're looking forward to a safer turn to public life once the smoke clears and our COVID, and our COVID transmission is sufficiently mitigated. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. A?
No, sir, I don't.
I had a question, couple. You said air quality score is 228. What does that mean? What's it supposed to be? I assume 228 is really bad.
So we, this is actually an improvement, because we've been in the 300s for a couple of days now. So our change in weather patterns overnight today is actually better than it has been. So what this means is it's a combination of pollutants and particulate matter in the air that's measured. I believe our, we have, our monitoring center is at Lacey on College Street. And it's, there's a detector that looks at kind of the ozone and other pollutants, as well as particulates, and then creates that score. So what we're hoping for is under 100, the 100 to 150 range is, would most affects kind of sensitive populations. So people who have lung disease and other issues would want to be cautious in the 100 to 150 range. And then, you know, then it goes up to unhealthy, very unhealthy, and hazardous. So we're on the downswing. And I'm anticipating that tomorrow we should see some significant improvements, even above the 228 that we have today.
My kids were asking me whether or not rain, like if it, I knew that the smoke blew in from a change in the wind. And the fire, I know the rain's, of course, good to put out a fire. But is it really help us, if it rains, does that help us with smoke? Or do we need the fires to go out and the wind to shift and blow the smoke elsewhere?
That's a really good question. I know people were anticipating that rain would be helpful. But at this point, I'd have to get back to you on which is more important, whether it's the rain or the wind. But both.
No problem. Period. Thank you so much.
Can I go back to your other question?
Yeah.
And that's about the 223. And we're optimal if we're under 100, but on a crisp, clear day, what would that be, like a 40 or 50, or would it be 80?
You know what? You know what? I don't know. So that's going to be, so I just came up to Thurston in July. I know that where I was, you know, air quality had a number of factors, including dust and things that aren't, you know, and pollution and things that aren't smoke. I'll continue to watch our numbers and get a local context and understanding of where we usually run.
I can just call ORCA and get that.
Commissioner Hutchings?
Yes, sir.
According to my handy dandy tool, which is by the EPA, under 50 is considered a good air quality.
Under 50, okay, we're 223?
Yeah.
With acid rain? Thank you.
Very good. That moves us to item eight, and that is Director Shelley Slaughter's report.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. In the interest of time, and since Dr. Abdemalik did such a great job in covering the key issues that our department's concerned about at this time, and wanted to share with the board and the public, I'll stick with COVID response update for today. We are in day 224 of our response. And our latest data as of this afternoon is we've had 10 additional cases of COVID-19 confirmed in Thurston County residents, bringing our current case count since this pandemic began to 1,107 Thurston County residents. 79 people have been hospitalized since this pandemic began. Currently hospitalized Thurston County residents, to our knowledge, is two, with other residents from neighboring counties in our hospital. There's a total of 14. Our hospital capacity is currently occupied, 83% of the beds are occupied. 907 Thurston County residents have been released from public health isolation and quarantine. And our current positivity rate is 2%, which is right at our target of where we is right at our target of where we would like to be. And we are currently investigating three outbreaks. We are very grateful to the Board of County Commissioners for the resolution recognizing our staff for their incredible efforts to respond to COVID-19 over these past months. And all of our staff continue to do amazing work to protect the health and wellbeing of our community. And immediately following this Board of Health meeting, we have a special Board of Health briefing to discuss racial equity. And so we are looking forward to that. And next month, I will provide more information and reports from our other programs and activities, and share more about the great work that is happening. Any questions?
Yes, I have questions, if the chair recognizes me.
Yes, Commissioner Edwards.
Recently, I got asked a question. And so I'll pass it on to you. The few people that we have in the hospital getting treatment for COVID, the majority of those folks have all recovered and gotten out, although, you know, we've lost 15 of our residents. But what I'm wondering about, as we are testing individuals, as, as these individuals are getting better in the hospital and getting headed towards a release, they get tested every day for COVID to find out when they're no longer experiencing the release of, of, I don't know if that's that antibody or what it is that shows that they still have the COVID. So are each one of those daily tests counted as part of the testing that we're keeping track of? What have you had, 7,000 or some tests now? And so do we count those as a daily activity? Because some people might get tested, I don't know, six times in the week before they get out. Would you know the answer to that?
Dr. Abdomal, do you want to answer that question?
Sure. To, to mine, to my knowledge, I'm not sure, I've, I haven't heard about, about daily testing. I know that was definitely the standard in, in, in some places. I know that the, that each, that percentage of positive tests accounts for all tests, but each individual is, is a case. The, the only, the, the, where we are now in the pandemic is figuring, is, is, is determining, so people can shed COVID-19 for long periods of time, including months. So we wouldn't necessarily expect people to test, to test negative. And that, that's not, and because people can complete a course of illness and not be shedding any active infectious particles when the CDC tests for, for infectious particles, but still test positive for some time after that. And that's why when we start thinking about questions like, like reinfection, we're looking at, and we're still learning a lot. So this is a very dynamic situation, is when would a repeat positive test represent a new infection versus whether it would be residual viral genetic material from an initial infection. And right now, the CDC puts that at 90 days, because they looked at also when the antibodies that we have start to decline. However, this is, a lot of this, a lot of this is in flux. So the other thing that we noticed that's special about hospital folks is, is that initially, it, when, when the, when the tests came out, there was a, you know, we, we knew that people were infectious for 10, for 10 days. So two days, two days prior to symptom onset and onward. But, but, but now what we're realizing is, is that for people with suppressed immune systems, including some folks who are hospitalized, they can release infectious particles for 20 days. And the CDC has since updated its isolation guidance to encompass that. So that, so that's kind of a, so in terms of thinking about how we're, how we're, how we're managing COVID-19 clinically, that's, 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 that's where we're, that's where we are. I would say that, that a test is, is a test when we do our aggregate test data, so that that's the percent positive tests. And, and at this point, I haven't heard of daily testing, although that was definitely done in other, in, in, in other countries. And yeah, but, but it doesn't count as a separate case, because the case is linked to the person who's sick.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If I may, if I may add just one more point to that. On August 25th, Washington State Department of Health reported that they changed their methodology, and the governor also shared that in one of his press conferences. And so multiple test results from the same day are counted only one time, and repeat tests on the individual are excluded after the first positive test result. So this should increase the accuracy and, and help to potentially address undercounting of, of cases, as well as any, reducing any duplication of cases. So there was a change recently in how that particular issue is, is addressed and is counted.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Okay. I think that basically wraps up. I do want to thank Shelley for reminding me that I want, I had intended to call attention to the Board of County Commissioners's resolution, thanking, supporting our public health staff for their work. We debated whether to do that with the Board of Health or the Board of County Commissioners. We decided to do that with the Board, but recognize it here at the Board of Health as well. You know, Commissioner Hutchings did a good job of summarizing it yesterday at the Board. But, you know, it's not just the pandemic, which of course would be enough. But then we have layered on top, you know, the economic reopening and all of the businesses reconfiguring and needing public health advice. And now we've got wildfires and air quality. And, I mean, we've got a, we've got a sewage spill in the middle of all this. I mean, the number of overlapping crises that have just been piled on our public health department is just unbelievable. And they're juggling all those balls adeptly. So the resolution was well deserved. And I hope that, I hope that, that the message got out to your staff, Shelley, of the meaning of it is, is very well meant by the Board. Okay. I want to thank everybody for attending this rescheduled special meeting of the Board of Health and move to adjourn. Do I, do I need a motion, Ramiro, formally?
No, sir. No, no, sir.
Okay. Then I'm just banging the gavel.
That's right.
Now, we have a work session, and I understand that's on a separate Zoom.
It's a, it's a separate Zoom. I think staff is waiting to join on the separate Zoom. So I'll connect you here in a minute. Thank you.
See you shortly. Thank you.